I would call this meeting to order at 5:14. First item on tonight's agenda is the district poverty update, resources, campus needs metrics, and introducing tonight's workshop is Dr. Collins.
Welcome. We're so glad you guys are here and we are going to just jump right into the work that we want to do tonight. And so you'll notice here on the title, "A Different Way to Look at Student Educational Needs, Outcomes, Local Programs, and Decision Making." And so we're going to be starting conversations around our fifth goal that we have. And so I just wanted us to start with this slide. So these are our priorities and our progress measures. So Stephen, would you read it under resources? Just kind of what's the big idea for resources?
Maximize our resources to promote a thriving district while maintaining sound fiscal management.
Okay, and then the goal that we have set. Michael, would you read number one, the goal under resources?
Yes, developing agreed upon campus needs index using key metrics for strategic staffing and resource allocation by March 1st, 2025.
So March 1st, 2025 is not too far down the road. And these are some conversations that are going to lead us to developing that metric. And so we've been partnering with an organization that is grounded in research and is going to bring us some initial things for us to think about. And your feedback and your perspective is very important because what you're going to look at tonight is a draft that we can add things to and we can switch things around. And so what we need you to do is to engage in the conversations tonight and be super honest and ask the hard questions because tomorrow morning at 8:15, we have a big group that's coming together to start developing the index that we want to use here in Arlington ISD. So I want to introduce Dee Carney, who is going to kick us off. And I'll let her talk about what's going to bring us together tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Smith, Dr. Collins, President Chapa, board members for the invitation to be here this evening. Over the last 10 years, education scholars have shifted away from achievement gaps, which are typically based on test scores and graduation rate differences. And instead, they're leaning more on a balanced approach, utilizing better data systems, and looking at measuring and understanding opportunity caps that drive achievement gaps. And so these gaps and opportunities for our students include both in-school and out-of-school factors. And while COVID-19 shone a bright light on these opportunities to learn, or lack of for some students, excuse me, they are not new. I chose to teach middle school math forever before moving into central office. And my students would dutifully turn in their free and reduced-price meals form every year. And one year, I had two girls turn their forms in. Both of them qualified for free and reduced-price meals. But one of them was in and out of a homeless situation. The other girl, her mom chose to stay home. Dad worked blue-collar construction. Now, both girls qualified for free and reduced-price meals, but in terms of educational need, very, very different. And so an opportunity-to-learn index is a different way of looking at resource allocations based on student need. If you have ever had an opportunity, I'm going to do this, to hear one of Commissioner Marass' presentations either to the State Board or to the House Public Education Committee or the Senate Education Committee, he typically starts with this slide. This is a slide, again, you'll see it's from TEA's annual report, and he focuses on the gap between the four-year high school completion and students who are prepared for college, career, military. Again, that is a gap that leaders such as yourself here, at every level of the school system, we are challenged to think and act differently to address the impact of income inequality and differences in opportunities to learn on academic performance. The most readily available consistent operational definition of educational disadvantage, you can call it the proxy we've used for lots of years, is free and reduced-price meals. That proxy was never intended to be used for academic need. It was intended to feed children, to run a meal program. But because it was a consistent national definition, it was used in a way that it was not designed for. But if we just look at who turns in their free and reduced-price meals form here in Arlington ISD for last year, 2022, 2023, we can see it ranges from 41%. Each dot represents a campus here in the district, and the dot represents the percent of economically disadvantaged students. So it ranges from 41% to 97%. But what those dots don't do is they don't tell you about the need. It just tells you who qualifies for free meals or reduced-priced meals. Now, I want to be real clear that poverty is not just a lack of money. If you haven't read Dr. John Fantuso's research work, you might want to look there because he says it's not just a lack of money. It is not an excuse for poor teaching or school performance. It does, however, that form does, however, serve as a shorthand for a lack of educational experience. But it does not provide understanding of the complex and sometimes overwhelming challenges our students face that could impact attendance, engagement, and performance. And so if we pull back, if we expand the definition of student need beyond who turns in that form, then we can begin to make some different allocation decisions. So what is an opportunity-to-learn index? Well, an opportunity-to-learn, it's been around a really long time, but it's the idea it's defined as whether students have had sufficient access to conditions, instructions, and resources and supports to thrive in school, become and contribute to the community. But again, there are in-school and out-of-school factors in an opportunity-to-learn. But it gives you a different lens as school leaders. And notice we talk about allocating finite resources. And resources is not just money. It's time, it's people, and it's materials, as well as money. So what we do, looking at the research, we found 30, we have selected 34 different indicators to help create an opportunity-to-learn index for each campus. None of this would be possible without your Dr. Natalie Lopez and her data team. So 12 student demographic indicators, nine effective school indicators based on the work of some of your leading researchers around what impacts engagement, attendance, and performance. And then student engagement indicators, the work of Dr. Caribo Jackson, and neighborhood indicators. This is where we look at census data and where your students go home to after they leave school every day. And we also, in another document, we look at outcomes. We look at 17 different outcomes beyond start. My favorite book, Think Like a Freak. Absolutely easy problems evaporate. It's the hard ones that linger. And Natalie and her team know it takes a lot of time to track down, organize, and analyze the data to answer one small question. So we asked Natalie for all this data, and we do that work. So let's talk about this tool. And tonight, you're going to be working with that tool to see different ways of looking at student need and academic performance. So here are the categories, and in just a minute, you're going to get a heat map. But I just want to teach you the tool really quick. So you're going to see, you won't see the school name because we intentionally de-identify campuses. And we only brought 26. So no, you can't tell whether they're elementary, middle, or high school. We mix them all up. And we de-identify the names to remove emotional attachment. The minute the names go up, the conversation changes. We want you looking at patterns and trends across these 34 indicators. 12 demographic indicators. And again, when you get your heat map, you'll be able to see what those are. The nine effective school indicators are in that peach color. The green are the student engagement indicators. And then the gray are the neighborhood indicators. Those come from the census data, where your students live, where they go home to. There are thousands of census data indicators to choose from. We chose the ones most closely aligned to the research on attendance, performance, engagement. Now, the colors. You're going to see shades of red from light pink to really dark red, from light green to really dark green. And those are based on some standard deviations that we have created looking at campus averages. We're not comparing you to the state because the state doesn't have all this data either. We're not comparing you to the nation. These are, they don't have that. But based on Arlington's campuses, what are those standard deviations? It's not a forced standard deviation. So green means that's a less need than the campus average. To bright red, that's more need. And we'll just leave it at that. But there's numbers behind it for Natalie and her team to evaluate because she wants to. And there's your heat map. Now, what I'd like for you to do, when you've got your campus, excuse me, your district administrators here, I just want you to take two minutes, where you're seated, and talk about what do you see? Don't try to solve a problem. Don't try to analyze what's going on. Just at your table, two minutes. Remember, I'm a middle school math teacher. The clock starts now. What do you see? Go.
I see a lot of red.
There's red.
Two campuses. There's disparities in the academic sphere. Like, there's a lot of reds. Not necessarily reds. So like, but there's something yellow red. Okay, number language. I'm going to be asking. I mean, like, I have a area that goes straight to red. Red, green, dark red, or light red. But nobody says another color. And then, as well, the whole entire part.
Very public housing. And so.
Well, you all like to look at the demographic.
A focus. And so.
Should they have to bright red? Should they have to red?
It's not like you see a green. I'm trying to track the product.
It's a high-key one area here.
You saying we're wearing your eye ball?
Yeah, that's their thing. I sure would, but when I was trying to. That's just what I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And a small. You can see the red indicators show red. You use the more than four. There's a lot of red.
Yeah.
Exactly. There are disparities. There's a lot of red. You and campus. Actually, you can do that.
Attrition rates must be to be done. A hiding area in general for one of the whole. That could be a student's. Sorry. All right. Look at everyone's habits. It's really interesting. That's really, I don't think it's really big. There are a lot of red.
All right, time, please. You know what it is? Yep. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, your principals, your leadership teams, your senior staff team, you can spend weeks just on this one chart. I only gave you two minutes. So would you notice? What questions do you have? Just take a couple before we do some more turn and talk around some specific questions. Anyway.
Well, the question I wanted to ask is, taking the neighborhood indicators, basically poverty, single-family house, they seem to use the symbols I use, child poverty, single.
Child poverty, family poverty, language other than English, male unemployment, single parent, we went specifically female household, high school education or below, the reliable internet.
You use the HUD poverty index?
Yes, sir, over here.
Yeah, that's the one I think is most highly correlated. But you're typically highly correlated. But when you look at the school indicators, there's not a strong correlation. There's some green there and some really red areas on the neighborhood and vice versa. There's a general correlation, but it's not as strong as you would think.
I thank you for bringing that up because when we met last month with the senior staff, we asked that same question, is help us understand why some campuses, now I'm going to this column right here, percent economically disadvantaged, why some campuses that have high percentages of economically disadvantages are green over here? And what we learned from, I can't remember who taught us this, but what we learned from the senior staff member is that some students and families are living in hotels, and they don't show up in census data as a HUD home or a HUD Section 8 housing. And so just so you'll know, when we learned that, we've gone back to look at our census data indicators to see if there's a way to pick those up. We haven't found it yet. Do you know of a way to do that?
For the hotels. I haven't thought. There's a bigger issue, too, is that you take our highest census tracts where some of our highest value of homes are in millions of dollars. And they don't look a lot different in the HUD poverty index than one where their kids are really in severe poverty and some of these other countries are high. And that's because we have a lot of very diverse. Within one single census tract, we have a lot of very diverse population.
So when we finalize the report, sir, you'll get a listing of those sources and resources, and you can see which indicators we pulled for the HUD housing. But we did learn that. So thank you for bringing that up. Another question, comment, ah-ha, wondering?
We noticed that not only are there campus-to-campus disparities, but there's category-to-category disparities. Like, in general, we notice the trends, like, we're doing pretty well with advanced course completion, Dr. Darko found, like, across the board. But then there are some columns that are just either red or pink for almost every campus.
And again, these are just 27 campuses. These are not all of your campuses, but you get the idea. So if all you did was allocate resources based on your first column, look at the information you would be missing about your campuses and the students that attend those campuses and what their needs are.
That's the most important takeaway, is free and reduced price, which goes at a percent like this, is not a good indicator. There's no, I haven't found a perfect indicator outside of that. There's a lot of better ones, like you guys have found.
Well, this index is helpful. Did you notice, did you notice that you can have similar high need? Right? You can have an OTL index of a 19 or a 21. You've got a couple up here with 18s. But the makeup of those 18s are very different. What the students need at those campuses, just because it has an 18 or a 19 or a 21, doesn't mean it's the same. Now, I want you to look at another piece about intensity. Which campus has the most dark red in tent cells? Which campus?
Looks O and U.
Count them up. Which one? Campus B? Yep. One, two, three, four, five. Now, overall, it's a 20. Overall, there's 20 shades of red because in our, we don't weight those shades any different. If it's a red or a shade of red, it gets a 1. Now, in the final report, we do some regression analysis, right? But for this, how you know the shades of red are more intense? So again, Campus B has an OTL score of 20, but their 20 is pretty significant in those areas. Yep? Okay. Now, we're going to give you one to write on and look at. And we've got a couple of questions for you. We got, and so senior staff, we've got four questions. We'd like for you to facilitate the conversation. And I'll give you what? Five minutes, Jennifer, is that okay? Can we take five minutes? All right. And then we will share out. So here they come. Feel free to write on these. Thank you. Thank you, groups, for facilitating the conversation. I would like to jump right into, what could it look like to use this information to help with strategic staffing and differentiated resource allocation? What, what, what could it look like? I know you talked about question number two. I know you did. What could it look like?
Well, you'd be, have higher assurance that more of your resources are going to the kids who need it the most.
If your CFO does what?
Allocates based on need.
So in districts I've worked in, I don't know about here because I didn't ask, but in districts I've worked in, it worked off a straight equal system. At 700 kids, we got an AP and a librarian. But the needs of our kids, we needed two APs at 700 and two librarians. You following me? Yeah. So what, I'm going to add on to what you said, sir. So looking at different ways of allocating staff, time, materials, and resources based on student need, rather than that straight, everybody gets one librarian, one AP at 700 kids. All right? All right. What else?
It looks, potentially could help us close the education gaps that we have.
Talk to me about that.
Well, we have significant education data at the gaps at different campuses that are different when you look from campus to campus. So we can't just say, like you said, everybody gets this, this, and this. Well, we also can't just say, well, then, everybody, every teacher needs this professional development training. That may not be what that campus needs to close that education gap. So using this information could help differentiate.
Support.
Our training, our support, and our learning for staff and for children.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And one more thing that other districts who have utilized this tool, we've used this tool this year with about 10 different, 10 different districts. They also talk about, in addition to differentiating professional development, is finding those campus leaders they may not have realized were really doing outstanding things with their campuses, right? Based on their needs. Because if you only look at that one column, and if you only look at one A through F letter grade rating, you may be overlooking some of your amazing campus leaders. Right? Yes, sir?
One of the things we talked about along that line is if you were to use an index like this in such a way where you could say, oh, this had 20, and this campus had four indicators total that were red, this one had 11, and you just focus on that one number, you would essentially be operating the same way that you do as economically disadvantaged. You have to, instead of looking at just that number, is look at the full scale of all the indicators that are at all the school and consider which ones, the combination of certain ones might have greater impact than the combination of others. And then also consider the fact that you might have some schools that have, like, four indicators, and they're outperforming schools that have one indicator, or one might have 11 indicators, and they're actually doing better than one that has one. So there, it's not like you can look at this without, like, the performance context to just apply it, like, oh, 17 indicators means you get this. You have to look at which indicators are impacting which performance measures and also what schools might be, look like on this, which should be performing better than others, but they're actually, the outliers are doing better or worse.
That, and you're perfect. Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Right, who's over, outperforming and who's, who could be possibly underperforming based on student need? Perfect, perfect. Question three. Just show me, right, on a scale of zero to five. I should see all hands up at this point. Right, zero to five. How big of a change is this idea for our system? Go. Let me see. Okay. Thank you. All right. Then number four. Senior staff, you just saw a whole lot of fives go up. So what do we need to consider as we develop this agreed-upon campus needs index? Ideas?
Dr. Buell mentioned something that I thought was really good. Dialogue with principals because there will be nuances to everything, right? One campus might have had a tragedy that affects many indicators. One campus might have had, you know, exceptionally great year for many reasons. And it's really important to have that dialogue with the principal because they have their finger on the pulse of their campus community.
That's a good point. What else? What else do we need to consider?
Need to manage and change the allocation.
Thank you, sir. Managing change. You've got principals who, um, let's get that here. You've got some principals who've received certain allocations based on current staffing formulas, current funding formulas. And now you're talking about changing the way those dollars and people and materials are allocated. That absolutely requires some change.
Obviously, there has to be a decision about, so this is, this is a tool. Is it the tool? Is it part of a greater picture, part of a formula that we use? What, what is it in terms of its importance?
And as, when we talk with principals and we, when we talk with principals, we tell them, this data doesn't give you all the answers. It does help you ask better questions, right? And that's part of this purpose is, if I've got a campus here and first column, you saw it, percent economically disadvantaged. Second column was a subset of that. How many students at that campus qualify for free lunch? That's a different income level. And the third column. second column was a subset of that, how many students at that campus qualify for free lunch? That's a different income level. And the third column is persistently disadvantaged. That's a research term, we didn't make that up. These are students who consistently qualify for free lunch over time. That column might be the one to look at for need allocation. I don't know that. But we tend not to look at that column because we haven't really pulled the data out, even though we have it available. Right, even though it hasn't been, one more thought, one more, what do we need to consider?
I think we have to consider actually two, two, two things. One is, what's the improvement you're trying to make? And which resources are aligned to help move that thing? So like a reading improvement is a specific thing. You might want to look at this through the lens of like how you would put reading instruction in its behaviors that you're trying to make better, what resources attach to those things that you want to like differentiate around. And the, and the other thing is, some of these indicators are things that are a little more in our control, and then there's others that are not in our control at all. So of the indicators that we actually have influence over, what are some potential strategies or actions we can take that can move people from red to a green versus let them, like just let whatever's there?
That's a great point. And we get that question often from campus leaders about, well, I can't control that. Right, I have the kids for this number of hours, I can't control what they go back to. But I'm going to retell that story, Stephen, that you've heard me tell before, right? The power of educators' circle of influence is amazing. Parents, guardians want their children to do well. They don't always know the right language, they don't always know the right actions, but they want them to do well. So the story I always tell when it talks about, we can't control, right? Principal, very wise principal, noticed she had a lot of kids missing school. And so she went to those students who were chronically absent. She didn't survey the whole campus. She asked the students who were chronically absent, why are you not coming to school? The majority responded and said, we don't have clean clothes. We're embarrassed to come to school. And these are little guys, but it happens at high school too. That very wise principal did not ask for a home liaison or an FTE. She asked for a washing machine. And when families needed to wash, any family could come to the campus and wash and dry their clothes. And when they were there, the family literacy specialist met with them to talk about ways they can help their child out. That's a way of allocating resources differently. And maybe it's the principals who also need access to this information so they can start thinking about different ways to allocate resources. So, just to close, this report is intended to generate questions, doesn't always have the answers. These questions may lead, in your eight fifteen meeting tomorrow, to examine these different types of resources and how we allocate them. Start that conversation. And that's what an opportunity to learn index is designed to do. It provides what we call actionable intelligence to level the playing field for economically disadvantaged students. That's one purpose. Thank you very much. We look forward to sharing the final report with Dr. Smith and Oliver.
At this time, the time being six oh two, people will assess and convene in the board chamber. Dennis, should I go ahead and call now or in there? We'll convene in closed session pursuant to sessions five five one one zero seven one, and five five one one zero four, and five five one one zero one. The Texas Department of Commerce reports to the Texas Department of Business.